Did you get the elements if you wanted some of them? No tractor tires, so we're all disappointed.
I think it'll come back next week.
What do we say?
Kerry, was there a final? I didn't see where the feedlot on this one that it got.
I've got it on mine. It's right at the end of Drew's section.
Right.
I didn't have any documents for it, though.
Which is fine. So wasn't Scott on here too?
Yep.
Can you resend me the?
I will, yeah.
Where is that on the agenda?
It was online.
That's not.
But you've got Scott. Unless I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the wrong one. That would be why. Where is my update as emails? We'll have to add, we'll have to add feedlot discussion at the bottom or two.
Yeah.
Bottom of Drew's.
I see.
Yeah, this is one in line. There's nothing out there.
I wonder if it shut itself off because I had it on too long. The one on the website does have the feedlot discussion on it.
So we need to add it so we don't forget.
Should be on there. Is it not on the one that I sent you? I just reset it.
There, it's on that one. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't throw some. No, I mean on the TV. Oh, okay.
Well. Oh, okay. It must have just been loose.
Slow to wake up.
Okay.
We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mokler, Packard, here, Smith, here. And he was going to be absent today and Hammond.
Here. Conflict of interest declaration. I have one on the feedlot discussion, so I'll be accusing myself on that one. You know others? Prove agenda with the addition of Andy.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Approval of minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard? Hearing none. Rod, we've got Dan Johnson. Good inspection.
That one's already on.
Morning, Commission.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us back again. I'm Dan Johnson with Johnson Engineering. And we've completed your biannual bridge inspections for the year. And I'm just here to give you a brief report on that. We did find a few issues this year. I think the counties to be commended on, you know, taking care of bridges over the years and, and eliminating or improving posted bridges. And deliver the report here to Rod. I've got it with me. But there were just a few things I wanted to mention. There's a structure north of Meckling, and I talked with Rod a little bit about this at the beginning of the year, but the DOT is requiring a new software to be used in load rating of bridges. And it's actually a newer bridge. I believe it was built in 2018. And eighty footer there, long bridge. And we are recommending posting of that bridge this year due to the corrugated metal deck. And so I've got in our report, the details of that summarized for Rod, but largely due to the new software we required to use by the DOT under our old software that we had used. We had not recommended posting, but with the new software, we are recommending posting. It's not a real severe posting. Twenty-four forty on that one for the single unit and combination vehicles. And let's do the corrugated metal deck. So that's wasn't great news, but we did find that.
That's one way to stay just gonna keep us from using those cheap brackets.
What, what's the issue with the corrugate deck?
Um, you know, I think it comes down to the spacing between the girders. Is, is kind of the main issue. That one has a decent thickness overlay on it. I believe we had measured seven inches at the centerline of the roadway above the top of corrugations. But I don't believe that reducing that overlay thickness would solve the problem there. And so, you know, really, it's, it's just a matter of, you know, the old software we used had it very close to needing posting. And the new software shows that it does require posting. And so it's actually due to the single unit vehicles is the reason for that twenty-four forty posting recommendation.
So forty ton max.
Yeah, yep, on the trailer vehicles, the combination type vehicles, yep.
And since you're saying it's a single vehicle, single trailer is what's causing the posting? There's no way to separate those two?
No. The, the issue actually comes up with the, I believe, I'd have to pull a report, but there may be an issue with the three dash two as well. I think that's where the forty ton cap comes in. I can grab that if you want, Travis, just to look at it or it's up to you. I can show it to Rod too after the meeting, but.
Is there any way to remedy that?
Um, I, I think that what you would probably have to do on that one is look into reducing the spacing for the support of the corrugated metal deck. You know, it's supported by the girders and we're not hired really as a part of bridge inspections to design a remedy so much, but at any rate, I think that you could probably work with a consultant to come up with a solution there. It's just, like I say, it's not a real severe posting. Zero to seven percent below legal load limit carrying capacity. So it's not, it's not real severe, but it is a posting on a newer bridge. It definitely is an area for concern. So yeah, if there is something to do about it, I would, I would recommend speaking with a consultant to do that. And, you know, getting a project together to come up with a design, but adjust it.
Because my only concern is there's a lot of truck traffic.
Yeah.
That's over forty ton on that road.
Yeah.
Legally, you know, with the triple.
Yeah, right.
And all we're gonna do is shove that on the bluff road. Can't handle it.
Yeah, that'd be worse in the long run for us. The longitudinal girders that go end to end of the bridge.
That's what supports the corrugated metal deck. Yep.
Right.
Yep.
Is that next week, Rod? You retiring?
End of the week.
Software?
Yeah. Lose the new software.
We did have a few other bridges that we're recommending posting on. Two of them were timber stringer bridges that you've got that are older bridges that have been posted in the past. Ones down near the bottoms there where a truss was shut down not too long ago, just east of a truss over the Vermillion River. It was posted at nine sixteen. Now we're recommending five ton posting on that one. Yeah, that one's one forty-one oh eighty. And then there's another one up near Hub City. One forty, one sixty that was posted at sixteen twenty-seven. We're now recommending for five tons as well. Those two are old stringer bridges, you know, that one near Hub City is in rough shape. It's got a lot of really bad piling, especially on the west abutment. And so that's the nature of why, why we're recommending five tons for that one.
There's one at the bottom of the hill by the Daleford Church. Mile east and mile north of.
Yeah, yep, right here.
On a dirt road.
Yeah, gravel road right next to, isn't there a, a turkey barn there? Just. That's a hog house. Okay.
Yeah.
And so, but yeah, we've updated your maps for you this year. I've got those. I'll get them over to Rod. I was gonna drive him over to the shop here after the meeting. So now if there are any other questions, I'd certainly be happy to talk about any of these in more detail with you or whatever you may want to discuss.
And that other one you talked about is east of, well, I call it the old Bucks Ranch. Curver University turns north. You go straight down there and we close the river bridge there. This is what maybe half a mile to the east of that, there's a small timber bridge over like a small creek over there.
Three thirteenth street.
Yeah, still on the river bottom, but yeah, that could be. I don't think anybody farms anywhere on either side of that road. So I mean, you said that's down to five ton.
Yeah, that's what we're recommending, yeah.
Would you probably still be okay pick up?
Yeah.
Borderline on a picture.
Right, but I mean, but I mean, you know.
Yeah.
And it's about three foot high is all.
Yeah.
You know, it ain't much of a, it ain't much of a structure, but it is.
It's hard to get under.
Thirty feet long and some.
Yeah, all of that. It might.
Might be longer.
Might, yeah, thirty, forty foot.
So I mean, we already got the main bridges.
So this is.
Close down on there, huh?
This it doesn't have a.
No, that's just a little wooden bridge. It's basically like that one up by the Dale'sburg.
Yeah, very similar.
What was?
I think that one's.
One forty-one sixty was that rated at? That five ton also?
Yeah. One forty-one sixty, five tons, single unit, five tons combination.
Cause there's only like seven before.
Uh, sixteen twenty-seven.
Was sixty?
Yeah. But the.
But the only ones that use that are the whoever owns that hog house or whatever. With right there to South Camp, remember his name?
John Lindstrom.
Yeah.
They come around from the east with their trucks anyway, for the most part.
I don't know if they get lost.
Yeah.
Like I have pictures in the dead of winter.
I see.
Did one year.
Yeah.
Yeah, because GPS told them that was the way to get there. Yeah, I, I don't have any thing else for it.
Okay. Well, sounds good. Thank you very much again, Commission. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on the bridge report, Rod, that you have? Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-six to delete bridge fourteen dash one thirty dash one seventy-six from the national bridge inventory.
This is one we had removed already from the state program. They, you know, Holloway's took it out earlier this spring. So now we get it off the bridge inventory and then we don't have to worry about anymore.
I'll move to accept the resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash twenty-six to delete bridge fourteen one thirty-one seventy-six from the national bridge inventory.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Micro-surfacing change order.
Yeah, we have a change order and a pay request. I believe application for payment. So the change order, you know, we added the county line, Yankton County, Yankton Clay County line. And then seeing how we bid the project, Yankton County did like six miles, five miles extra. So that's where the one million nine hundred seven thousand two hundred eleven oh one comes in. But so that's the change order that you need to sign from the original one point three. So we added all that other onto it. So we need to sign that one.
The, the application for payment one.
No, that's the change order number two.
Oh, okay.
I'll move to accept the change order.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Okay. The application.
On the application for payment, our amount is line eleven, which includes eight, nine and ten, which is one million four hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars and ten cents. That's our share of all we did plus half of the colony line. I think it added like a I don't remember how much extra it added from the beginning.
There is five hundred ninety-four thousand two eighteen point ninety-nine is in the change order.
Right, but the original contract was one, one million three hundred and twelve thousand and.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah. And now we're one million four hundred and thirty-four.
Yeah, because we didn't have that nine miles of the county line.
Right.
On the original, we changed that afterwards, so.
Looks like a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollar increase.
Move to approve the application for payment.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
And it looks good. Or as I can see, so all straight, all done, so.
D one pipe replacement documents.
Yeah. Apparently you have those.
Yeah, I don't have.
I did. I didn't put that one on there. Is it always Brad on it?
I'm, I'm on here. That, that's the construction contract.
Oh, I already sent that back, right?
No, 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 not, nope. I, I need Travis's signature on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're having a pre-con meeting at one o'clock today and they already got signs in the ditch, so I'm assuming if they don't start it on it this afternoon, it'll probably be tomorrow, so.
That was the plan.
Okay. So those have been taken care of.
No, I don't think so. I still need to sign them, but we haven't proven yet either, right?
Right.
So that we need to, I need authorization to sign them.
Yeah, okay. Move to approve the signing of that contract. D one pipe replacement documents.
Mount Segren.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. How to advertise for sealed bids on surplus broom?
Yeah. I talked to Kerry about it already. I think we got it handled. Were you able to find anything?
I didn't get a chance to.
Yeah. Well, we just got the broom back from getting repaired. So it, no big hurry really, but the verbiage, I just wanted to make sure that was correct. And I know you guys said we could accept any or we could re, yeah, refuse any all. I just wanted to make sure I get that right. I got all the information, so we'll get that, try to get that going. And I looked through, that's how I found out. My computer was messed up yesterday trying to find my old documents and yeah. That was a start of fun. So I think we got that handled and I have not received a quote on that black freightliner getting a dump box on it yet. Stopped in to see the guy the other day and he was out of his office, so I got the email to him. I haven't got a response from him yet on that. So when I get that, I'll let you know.
And then you're gonna have all the bids sent to Kerry.
Right. Yeah, I don't want them coming to my hands. I think that's like the other counties I looked, some of theirs, they do it a little different, but it all goes to the audit's office. And then some of them are putting a price on it, but we're just gonna see what we get correct. Okay. Cause that's up to you guys to decide. How would that go is three taxpayers or something else to decide what the amount is or I don't remember how that works. Goofy, but we do it this way. We, we don't get enough, then we can wait, put it on your art sale. I got an idea what it's worth still.
Anything else right now?
Did you wanna, can we talk about that letter? Seems I wasn't on here.
Oh, it is. It's on the bottom.
Yeah. One, one other thing too in between, how, how filling in the big hole goal to turn out the way you want it to?
Yes, it worked excellent. They're finishing off. Unfortunately, we got that rain.
Yeah.
And this time of year, rain and clay, they don't dry out real quick, but they're up there finishing the stream bed and then we got to armor the sides with some concrete and we're done.
Yeah.
So yeah, it worked excellent so far. Till the next time. Till the next time.
So Timber Road right away in trees.
Yeah, it, we got that letter from John Slattery, who, who's attorney for Mrs. Struckman Johnson and I was a little surprised by the wording of that to start with. It, she said, it says that as you're aware, Professor Struckman Johnson was recently cited by the county for her foliage obstruction view around along Timber Road. She's now rectified the problem at her own expense and we believe the county is satisfied with the situation. What's your opinion on, on, on whether it's fixed the way it ought to be?
Like I told Philus, when I went over to look at it, it looks good, but all the leaves are gone.
Yeah, well, you back in and you.
But I mean, I, I could see, I thought, I don't, what, what, what did you say?
Yeah, I was.
I backed in both driveways.
Yeah, I did too. Couple of weeks ago and it, it looked like it would be safe to me.
I do.
I'm not an expert in that field, but it looked like it was good. And I was a little surprised by the wording that it said that we were cited.
Yeah, I know.
It was a friendly reminder that no other landowners got as close as I can, I can guess on our annual fall tree trimming, so.
Yeah, I don't know what to say to it.
No, there was no citation that I know of.
No, I never even, you know, I didn't send anything out to.
And the other part was on the eighty foot right away. So we don't have a map or any records of which of our roads are.
No, he mentions that he's tried twice to get something from us. We told him twice that the official documents are at the register deeds office. When I go by his old road records way up, couple of years ago, it was really windy and we had a couple of the weed gals go through all the old road documents. So we got a list on the wall and that's a general idea. But then we go to Beacon and go between the blue lines and granted they're off this way, but the distance between them says eighty feet. And that's what we were going by, so. I don't know to me if they want to prove otherwise, then they should hire somebody to come. We'll get the registered deeds because the engineer that wants to do that says it's time consuming and, you know, they weren't gonna do it for nothing, so. And I, I don't have time to sit up there and look.
I, I think the issue for Dr. Struckman Johnson is, 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 this is not her issue. It's her neighbor's issue who has been giving her a really hard time. And so I, I, I think she's really looking for some certainty here in order to protect herself from, you know, this, this, this neighbor's criticisms and phone calls and complaints. And he, he seems to be very focused on this.
Well, it's obvious she's really focused on it.
And I guess in my opinion, it looks good to me.
So. Should we send them, should we answer John's letter just saying that it after we have looked at it, that it appears to be, the visibility issues appear to be resolved?
I think that would be really helpful.
And remind them that this is gonna be the ongoing maintenance.
Yeah.
Issue.
Yes.
And that she wasn't cited.
That's right.
And at a minimum, the right of way is thirty-three, that half is gonna be thirty-three feet.
Correct.
At a minute.
He mentions.
So I mean, that's the certainty. If she's looking for certainty, she knows she has to be at least thirty-three feet from the center of the road. If we can find something different that says forty feet, then we can update that.
Yeah, and, and you had someone go out and measure each of the roads. The asphalt roads are generally around eighty as close as I can tell, you know, not getting out and measuring, but they all have. they all have wide road ditches, which are their.
Basically, what we go by is fence line.
Correct.
It looks like it's been there for fifty years. Or the REA poles, they're usually a foot outside right away.
Yeah, it, it's sometime in the past, you know, those, those ditches were established and the fence lines were established. And so almost by grandfathering, you can go out and measure, see where the, where the, uh, fence lines go to and, and know de facto what the observed right of way is.
And so all the, what are the, the right of ways occur, we put those little right of way signs out there. That's all I go by is what it says on Beacon or what we found.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't hire a surveyor.
Where do we, where do we have those on our highways?
Everywhere.
Do we?
Yeah, just to the east of there, all the way to Timber, all the way to nineteen, we got some on University Greenfield up by Wakanda, South Wakanda, East Wakanda.
Yeah.
Every place where we find an encroachment. We gotta do something west of the shop this year.
So we have marked right of ways on Timber Road.
Yes.
And I, I think that letter would really, um, resolve the problem, uh, for Dr. Struckman Johnson because it would allow her to give it to her neighbor to make it absolutely clear. You know, what, what was, uh, permissible and what her responsibilities are, and I think that's all she wants.
She has no responsibilities actually, because in typically on, uh, taking away obstructions to right of way visibility, uh, the county does that. She did that voluntarily at her own cost. Uh, she didn't need to. We didn't even need to, uh, alert her that we were going to be doing some trimming, but we did as a courtesy.
So who's the letter come from? I mean, who's, I mean, granted for us, but who's gonna write it?
Let's see. Did you?
That was, yes, sir.
Did you hear that?
I was taking notes as you began to outline what you wanted to say. I'll email it, I'll email it to you to put it in the a letter format or?
Yeah, and I think you should send, probably should send it to John.
Do you want it to come from me?
I think so. It came, you know, we got, we received a letter from her counsel. That puts it in the legal side as far as I'm concerned, so the letter probably should come from you.
Whatever you think's appropriate, or I can sign it.
Yeah.
I'll work out some language.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Shorter than John's.
No cocaine. Anything else? Stick around. Don't leave.
Well, no, cause ditch board is next.
Well, yeah, uh, even after that. We'll entertain a motion to go into district. Second, second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, we're in ditch board. Click, click, ditch clean out.
Yeah, so I talked, well, yeah, I talked to Brad to ask him where we're going and he's gonna do three separate ones, bid things and yeah. Go ahead, Brad, you explain it.
Yeah, so we, we, we divide that into three separate contracts. The, 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 the section that's what, what, uh, was in, in the FEMA section is its own. Then the rest of the clay county ditch to the county line is one, and then all the Yankton County work is another project. That bid opening is November tenth.
What's the completion date?
And, uh, we set that at, at, uh, I believe we discussed that here. It needs to be done.
December first, next year.
Of next year.
So they I guess the only thing I'm concerned is as long as it's an open winter, they can clean all winter, correct? I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't have any, any restrictions at all, just, just the, just that date.
I drove three miles of it west of the Mecklenburg oil to the county line. And there's like six inches of water and I never did find a Beaver Dam. I don't know why it held up, could be from a slump, but it's bad. And alls I could see is the north side. And I hate to miss out on getting something done. I guess what I'm more worried about is that last four miles, cause we just had another FEMA meeting yesterday and they're, you know, they, they thought it was completed and we said, no, we hadn't even started, cause we didn't get any contracts. So I'd just like for sure that four miles to get cleaned out so we can end this FEMA thing since two thousand nineteen that's been going on. Well, we had a couple of years of arguing before they decided that the county was administrators of it, so.
Right. But yeah, we didn't have any bids and, and even if the winter's open, they can't dig because the ground's gonna be froze. I talked to the contractors that you normally bid. They said if we were digging six feet down, yeah, but since it's just a foot or so every now and then, that doesn't work anymore. They can start in the trees.
Yeah, like, boy, if we're out there right now, it'd be so easy.
They're also busy, that's why.
I know, that's, why would you get, uh, I, I, it's a shame because it's perfect. I mean, right now the crops are all out. There's hardly any water in it. It's easy to see what needs to be done.
We're gonna get some interest in this one. I've gotten calls from people asking for plans, uh, folks that, and you know, and I sent it out to, you know, everyone that kinda in the business in the neighborhood and I, and I've gotten, you know, I've gotten calls with questions where I, I think this date is gonna make that better.
Good.
Now, I, I'm not gonna be here on the tenth, but I think this, Kerry can just email me the all the bids and I'll take care of that on the Monday. I, I'm gonna be out of the country, so I, and I, and I won't be able to get in on Zoom either, um, so I'll be gone for that one.
Which is fine, cause we'll.
It's just an opening. Just open them and send them to me and I'll take care of it.
Open on the tenth and we don't, we won't finalize until the twenty ninth of November.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions for Brad? Thanks, Brad.
Yep. Uh, hey, before I sign off, uh, of all the other stuff, Kerry, that, can you just email that stuff to me, the CCO pay request and this contract when you get them all together?
Yep, I'll send them out to you today.
Perfect, thank you. Is that kinda it? Or do I, do I need to hang on? I think.
I think that's it for you.
Okay, send me a text if you need me back on.
Thank you.
All right, talk to you guys later.
But.
So should we just leave the Beaver Dams that are there alone, or should I get all the state trapper, or just?
Well, we could trap them. Probably be easy.
I haven't found him. I haven't, haven't went out and looked. We might have to fly it again with the drone to find him. But he wants to know where they're at. He doesn't just wanna come down and
Start looking.
Start looking for, on eleven miles.
Does he want him broke out of there?
No, he does not want him touched, that's why.
Okay.
If we're gonna do it, I think. Now, I'm, I mean, don't we pay into him?
Yep.
So I'll get a hold of him today and see what his timeline is and I'll try to get him spotted. That's the only reason, there's gotta be water standing.
Not much water for the poor little devils to dime, damn up right now.
They're working hard.
Yeah, they'll, they'll try. So.
That's all I have for the ditch, uh, ditch board.
Entertain a motion to come out.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second, uh, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, we're in regular session. Lauren.
They're on.
Okay. Okay, um, I'm here today. I don't know if Travis got a chance to talk to any of the other commissioners, okay? Um, this is Oakley Perry. He is the state liaison between the county operations and um, the state four H office now. Um, I, long story short, I got a new secretary in Union County and he went to the commission there with Oakley's help and Union County has agreed to take me as fifty percent. And so the next step then is to come here to you guys and ask if you would like to go fifty percent also, and then we would go to Yankton and ask them to go down to zero. So that is what I'm here today and Oakley can answer any questions about that that you guys might have. Um, I do think that you guys already, I don't know, happy circumstance maybe this year. It's, I think that the money is technically already in the budget for next year because when I did my budget, I included that bonus that you guys give department heads and then I believe that you guys did that on top of that again, so there there is money there that yeah, yeah.
And we still like her.
So this doesn't leave Yankton and alert, right? There's still.
So Yankton County already has a county paid, um, they call her a program assistant, but she has the degree. She's qualified to be a county paid YPA. And so we'll be in that discussion with Yankton County, but no, based on their population, they're in perfect shape.
Okay. But what change are we gonna see then? Actual change?
So currently I spend two days a week in Elk Point, two days a week here in Vermillion and one day a week over in Yankton. So that one day a week from Yankton would shift to either Clay or Union. It would be every other week, but yeah. And I also told, when I talked to Travis a few weeks ago, I also told him I'm from a, for me personally, from like a workload and a mental health stance, I think that this would be much better than what I'm currently doing, so.
And going forward, you said about two thousand dollars a year.
That's about what the increase, right?
On our part.
Going from forty to fifty percent. Yep.
Sounds good to me, but sounds good to you.
Sounds great to me.
Now, the only other thing I'll tell you is in addition to that salary increase, which is about two thousand, Lauren does have to do some state travel and currently that gets billed out twenty percent Yankton, forty percent y'all, forty percent Union. So you may see a slot increase in that travel as well. I don't anticipate that to be extremely high, but just be cognizant of that as well.
I don't think, I don't, we've, we've not used our entire travel budget um, for the last few years either, so I anticipated that Raven would have a couple more travel expenses than she has been turning in, so.
Good, sounds good to me.
Do you want us to approve it yet, or do you wanna talk to Yankton first?
On my side, what I would need is for you all to approve it and then I will go to Yankton.
Oh, okay.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing on roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Thanks.
Would be more pleasant now.
Yeah.
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 Andy, is yours quick?
It is, isn't it? I was just gonna update you on the, uh, the car issue. Do you recall last meeting, uh, we were told Ford canceled the order for cars? So I went and I ordered three Dodge Strangos from the state bid, um, with the hope that one would be a canceled order from another county and we get that one now. Uh, so far that other county is, looks like they're gonna take their car. And so right now we're waiting for three Dodge Strangos in twenty twenty-three, probably delivered in August. And I need a car sooner than that. So I got online, uh, looking at, uh, federal surplus and I found South Dakota has a, uh, a Ford Explorer. It's not a patrol car, but it's Ford Explorer, uh, it's twenty fifteen, so it'd be as old as our oldest car. But it's got little miles, uh, compared to our other cars, but that's a eighteen thousand, three hundred dollar car. And then, uh, looking at Nebraska's federal surplus, they actually have several patrol cars. And, uh, one of them caught my eye. It's a twenty seventeen, uh, which is, um, it's got ninety-four thousand miles on it, but we've got a twenty seventeen with something like a hundred and sixty thousand miles on it. Uh, the Nebraska one's only sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars and it actually has some police equipment already installed in it. So I think we'd see some savings with that. I checked with them and they'd have to transfer to South Dakota's inventory before we could buy it. But, um, I put both those vehicles on hold and they were agreed to hold them while I talk to you, so. If we were to buy one of those, um, my intention would be hopefully it would just then fall into the rotation, wouldn't, and we cancel one of those Dodge Strangos for next year. And, um, if it doesn't work out, if it's, uh, lemon, then maybe we change, change our mind and deal with that problem, you know, when it becomes one. So we've got the money in the budget this year to buy a car. The intention was it was gonna be a brand new car, but so I, I'm not really asking for money, just making sure that that would be agreeable to you and and I think it'd be the way to go for us now because I'm gonna be short a car here in another month when I get a, a deputy back from this deployment.
So is this?
My only question is with all of the, I don't know how else to put it, insanity, um, I would not cancel one of the cars. It's very possible they'll cancel it on us anyway.
That is possible. The, uh, and that, that's a good point because, uh, I talked to the dealer about that and he had no reservations about me ordering any amount of cars that we thought we might want. Cause he knows he'll sell them. If we cancel them, there will be people like me that came along later that need it. So he had no concerns about that. So yeah, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to cancel right away. They're not coming till August.
Well, and the possibility, if one of them or two of them could be the next year.
Yeah, and yeah, it's almost certain that none of them would come before the end of this year anyway. And we do have cars, uh, two cars scheduled to rotate out next year.
Keep all three.
And the money's in the budgets.
Yeah.
For equipment. Do we have equipment that will go into that Explorer?
Well, uh, the, the one in Nebraska has most of the equipment we intend to install. We've already bought all the equipment that was supposed to go into that car that we ordered that got canceled. So we're sitting on a bunch of Ford Explorer equipment and we have Dodge Strangos on order. Uh, I didn't wanna do anything till this decision was made because, you know, some of it could be used in some sense, you know, some of the equipment, we have a radio that we'd install, our, our extenders would be installed, uh, the computer equipment. But other than that, uh, the Nebraska ones have light bars, cages and things like that already. And so we'd work with the, uh, dealer that sold us, so we'll see if they take a return on those. We might have to pay a fee or shipping or something to get, get them sent back to them or, or something. He hasn't even sent us a bill for them yet. We've got them all here, but, um, we haven't been billed, so I would, I would work to see if we can get that stuff returned. Or that, yeah, yeah, you know, at our cost because they're probably waiting for things. So there's a lot of options to us right then. I just wanna make sure we've got our needs met before I start.
So which part do you rather have?
I'd probably, if I could get it transferred to South Dakota, that twenty seventeen Explorer in Nebraska, it's cheaper than the twenty fifteen in South Dakota. And it's a police car in terms, rather than the other, it's got, you know, vinyl flooring, vinyl backseat and, um, you know, some of the other things that they do with patrol cars is, you know, pillar mounted spotlight, things like that.
Let's say go for the one you feel is appropriate for your use.
Yeah.
So we just need a motion to do that.
Oh, I will also move that, um, you go further on Nebraska vehicle and if that doesn't pan out, that you try the next one.
Yeah, Nebraska had, had about four or five of them. Uh, and, uh, this was the one I think best suited our needs. One of them was a lot less money, but it was pretty beat up. I don't think we wanna go that route. Yeah.
Yeah, two thousand seventeen one, why would they be getting rid of one that new, or is that their policy?
I'm gonna guess that there, uh, they probably have a, an agency. You know, this is federal surplus, so it's not necessarily Nebraska.
Okay.
Federal circle stuff comes from wherever, but there's, there's probably. Federal surplus stuff comes from wherever, but there's, there's probably an agency that has a 90,000 mile trade out policy or something like that. And they hit their, hit their threshold, and they rotated it out.
So it, it could be the first 90,000 miles for the first Florida flood.
Yeah.
But we have no way of knowing that beforehand.
Car cracks.
We'll try it. Yeah.
Is this a hybrid, or is this?
It is not. None of them, none of the ones I found on surplus were hybrids.
Second, yeah.
So I have a motion and a second to authorize Andy to purchase the vehicle.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. And then at some time, Carrie, I suppose we should transfer whatever excess funds into, because we haven't created the, the fund yet for the cars, have we? Or have we? That's separate.
I, I can do it at any time, so.
We should probably transfer the excess funds into their.
Yeah.
Just so there's a savings account bank for next year, we have two, at least two. At least two, yeah.
Hey, did you deal with the guy in Yankton or is he? The dog is here, here.
State, state.
Cause I tried around here for a pickup and let me have a look here. Or include me.
I don't think so.
Thank you.
Ruth. So we have plot approval at 46552313th Street. This is the one we had on last week, W tabled. Mike got his questions answered. He's okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's. We'd have for about three, there's.
Looks good to me.
Yeah. So I need a motion.
Motion to approve that plot approval.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Motion passes. Second reading ordinance 2022-12 regarding amendment to the 2013 revised zoning ordinance for Clay County. The commission will hear, consider, and act on amendment to chapter 4.05.05 districts and boundaries. C1 commercial district conditional uses specifically adding off sale alcoholic beverage establishments to the commercial district conditional uses.
Same one from before, for Toby's essentially, yeah. And, yeah, then after this, the rezone and variance for Toby's will be coming down next meeting, so.
Move to approve ordinance 2-12.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? This will just put them in compliance, right? I mean, they're, since they're already operating this way, there's no.
Yeah, this is what's on their liquor license.
Yeah, sounds good. So it'll just. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. Second reading ordinance 2022-13 for request to rezone land located at 45304, 302nd Street, Wakanda, South Dakota, from A1 to C1 for agribusiness, medical marijuana cultivation facility. Yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number 2022-13.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mokler.
Yes, motion passes. You've been here one more meeting, John. We could have put you on payroll. Come back and redo us next one.
Yeah, he'll probably be here, we'll figure out, month and a half for his actual medical marijuana license. We'll make sure we can get it. So, sure, yeah, the plan is already on the desk. Yeah, so we're moving ahead.
Good, thank you. Thanks. Resolution 2022-27 to establish a civil penalty for violations of the Clay County's only ordinance.
Yeah, we've got a situation with a, a feedlot that started up without any permits, and letters have been sent, he's been notified, and this is getting a fine in place, so he doesn't respond by November 23rd-ish.
This is for any violation. This isn't just.
I'm sorry.
The next situation.
Yep.
Talking to Lexi, I know she had an issue with what, civil penalty?
Yeah, I don't really care for that language or ordinance, but it is what it is. And I, and I ultimately ended up finding, so I already, I think, reconciles my concerns. Because when we look at statutes, when there's a county ordinance violation, statute specifically authorizes you guys to impose a penalty up to, and including anything that is the maximum penalty for a class two misdemeanor. So lots of different places are going to specifically identify that a county ordinance violation is a class two misdemeanor offense. It's kind of a gray and circular area in our law as to whether or not a county ordinance violation is a criminal or civil offense. And so that's where, I mean, when we specifically reference that all county ordinance violations, Jeff, a deputy goes out and cites somebody with a violation for an ordinance offense, whatever that might be, that's gonna be treated, it's gonna come into criminal court, it's gonna come in, and, and the rules of criminal procedure by statute are gonna be followed, and all of those things. But there is a statute out there that does identify that the actions for violation of county ordinance shall be civil cases, and the county shall be the plaintiff. So it's commenced by filing a complaint, and the response there too, you know, anytime we have a criminal citation is technically a criminal complaint, and that's what it says at the top of citation. Most of the time, people don't pay attention to that. So it's this weird animal of statute that is a civil proceeding, but it's treated like a crime. The penalties for which you can impose specifically reference you back to class two misdemeanor penalties. And so, you know, I don't really care for that civil penalty. I think a lot of the different county ordinance ordinances that I've reviewed make reference to imposing fines or penalties. I mean, it's a technicality, but, but anyway, so when I think of civil penalty, I think of like an overweight trucking case, where there is a fine and cost, and then you could specifically, the state statute authorizes a civil penalty on top of that for all of the, for depending on the, the formula for calculating that. So I don't really care for that, but I think we're okay including that, and it's what the, what our ordinance says at this time. And so that's why the proposed resolution, if you guys have it, references the civil penalty, but fines and costs. So you can do up to, I mean, you don't have to do a full 500, but you can do up to $500 fine for a violation of a county ordinance, up to 30 days in jail. I mean, that's the part that's, again, wonky and odd to me, because civil proceedings, we don't incarcerate people. So, but it's authorized by statute. So it's what you guys want to do. This is just establishing, this is kind of been a long time coming, something that really needs to, we, we've come back to it a couple different times of when there's a county ordinance violation, what's the penalty for this? So for this particular situation, the other thing that in that proposed resolution is, do you want to make it pursuant to an individual corporation, et cetera, et cetera? Now, I can't charge a corporation with a crime. So that's the other part that I, you know, I'm inclined to say an individual, but did propose that language in there, because depending on who owns the property and who's in violation, and then you have three options in that proposed resolution for, I mean, this is the finding someone for this type of offense is one remedy out of a few different options. Now, somebody persists in doing this, not only can they be fined for violating the county ordinance by putting this into place, but we can also do an injunction, civil action. So, so by pursuing this, it doesn't, and, and the resolution kind of outlines that, just underscores that there's other legal remedies. We can pursue other civil legal remedies, like an injunction to request a court order, the actions cease immediately. If it qualifies as a public nuisance, we can do abatement proceedings to go in and really take care of this, and then assess those costs back to the property owner themselves. Or as option three is in there, and I don't have it in front of me, but I think it, it has to do with the owner, if they're different from the, the proposed resolution would, would say that we can do, you're gonna look at assessing the individual who's responsible, but could also look at additional remedies for an owner or tenant of any building structure or premises who's furthering this contractor's those. So, any, all options, if you want to, you know, Drew can speak further to some of that. I know he put together the draft of this, reviewing some other information from other counties and CCOG and those things too. So I don't know if you have questions for either of us about what your options are, or what you want to do with this.
Is that 500, just straight 500, or is it per day? Because what I was reading, it could be per day.
Good question. Yeah. So it, it would be per day. And one of the things about our ordinance, and I think this is prudent too, is that it, it talks about Drew giving, putting the person on notice that he's aware of a violation, and then giving them a reasonable time to remedy that. I don't know that you even have to do that. If you, there is provisions in the ordinance about that, but I mean, if somebody is blatantly violating a county ordinance, they should be on notice, you know, is strictly liable for that. But I think the nice thing about giving them that notice of, hey, this has come to our attention, you've got X amount of time to remedy that. First of all, it's consistent with the language that's already there, but then we're kind of making this in conjunction with that mini ha ha, the way they did it when I was reviewing their, their ordinances. If somebody's put on notice, then each day thereafter can become an additional violation. And that's essentially what we're doing here. I think that seems very reasonable. Once we put them on notice to remedy it, they've got to get it taken care of. And then if they just choose to continue to blatantly violate, every single day is another offense.
The other was, is, I noticed, I was trying to find legal and found 16 things, you know, did parts. Is there a cap on?
I don't think so. And I, and I think that's one of the things too, that's really important here is, I mean, if we have somebody who's just blatantly, why would anyone comply with the requirements and go through applying for a CUP, and all the other things that they need to do if there isn't a penalty affiliated with not compliance? But I also know from personal experience, we have people who are ordered to pay fines every day, and it becomes, it becomes sometimes cumbersome, and whether or not those are actually collected, sometimes even when we get resolved in, say, a criminal case. So I think that there does come a point in time, we don't want to completely box ourselves. That's why we referenced the injunction and some other avenues of, at some point in time, it may be prudent to go in and actually take care of the situation ourselves with other civil remedies, but that can be in addition to these penalties.
So are we able to assess these fines to the property?
So if we go about it, and I'm gonna call it criminal, because that's my frame of reference. So if we go about the criminal fine route of a violation of the county ordinance, which is what you're establishing here, in my experience, what happens with that is somebody gets ordered to pay fines and costs. They go through the criminal court system, you know, maybe they, maybe I cut him a deal, and they plead to four counts, and I dismiss for whatever that might look like. And they get assessed a fine for each of those counts that they've pled to. They have X amount of time to pay that. If it doesn't, there's a state collection agency that goes about collecting and things like that. I don't know the answer on what we do for county fines, you know, we could see what they do for city municipal violations, like public urination. Does the kid, if, if they don't, if a person doesn't pay that, does it go on to, I think those are POA offenses, that's probably a bad example of that, because a warrant would just kick out if they don't pay it. But is the state collection agency, they're gonna, gonna collect on our stuff? Would we go on, you know, like court appointed attorney fees? Those get given to Carrie's office. We can do, use a collection agency to go after the person and collect civilly, but I mean, in a roundabout way, at some point in time, if the person doesn't pay their financial obligations, it's, there's an obligation upon us to initiate civil proceedings, like taking a lien against their property, those types of things. But it's, it's on us to enforce that. And that's.
Which is fine.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I mean, if we can't enforce those fines somehow, is there any way that we can put in this resolution then that no building permit will be given until fines are paid? Ever, not just on what the fines.
Oh, we can't do it forever. Can't do that.
Why not?
On, an individual can never take out a building permit again.
If he owes the county money?
I'd want to look into that for sure, because I, I mean, it's an interesting and creative solution to that. I just would want to make sure that that's something that we could.
And that's not that much of a penalty, because the vast majority of people never take out a building permit anyway.
Well, that's, that's presuming the person is, and they weren't lawful to begin with.
Yeah, I mean, most people, most people never, you know, they buy a house, they, you know, a slim majority build a house. You know, somebody might come in for a green bin building permit, but that's for farmers. Most of the time, I'm dealing with contractors, probably half, two thirds of the time, so.
Fine, but you just, if it, if it's that individual that owes money because he didn't, if he's been fined, they're not getting a building permit, and they're not gonna want to throw, even if it is just a green bin, nobody's gonna throw a $100,000 green bin to have it tore down.
So I mean, a couple of things in that regard, like I, I, I like where we're going from a creative standpoint of solutions, because for a policy aspect, I don't know that this is completely unheard of. You know, the state, when people don't pay fines and collections, that their driver's license can get suspended. They won't necessarily be able to renew different. So there's, there are remedies available.
State tax lien.
Similar nature, hunting.
Everything you're referencing involved the state to begin with, when they levied the fine.
Well, and that's where I want to see if we have the authority, I mean, the county only has the authority given to it by the state constitution and statute. So we can't overstep that. I just would want to look into, can we do that? Now, building permits are in our wheelhouse, so can we, I just don't know the answer to that today. And then along those lines, you know, in this scenario that you just articulated, all of that is true, it does require, and there's a very famous case, and Drew had just referenced me to that recently, and I think a lot of people are familiar with it, with the house in Sioux Falls, that it went on forever, battles and battles and battles of them in violation of things. And ultimately, this beautiful home had to be, you know, yep, knocked down because it was a blatant non-application to the, to the process. So, but again, we're coming back to civil remedies then to enforce that. And so I just want to remind us of, I, I think this is good, this is, like I said, this fine situation, whether we make that determination today, or at a subsequent meeting, if you want to think about it some more, individual, do you want to include the, the penalty of the 30 days, up to 30 days yet? What do we want to do? But I do think that these aren't our only remedies. I mean, sometimes we'll want to address things too, through like an injunction action or something in that.
Yeah, in this particular resolution, it looks to me like, you know, in thinking about everything we've talked about in the last five minutes, it could be the thing with the most teeth here, is, is the last few sentences, where we would have possibility to enjoin someone from delivering materials or services to the property that aids the person in, in violating our, our ordinance. Another, you know, so it could be that the last bits of concrete or lumber to build something, or perhaps even delivering water to the site for one reason or another, could have joined, enjoin clay roll water, for instance, from, from delivering water to the, to the facility, other types of materials. That could be the one that really has the most teeth, under present ordinance.
I like that a lot.
Yeah, there is a downside to that also. I mean, I like it, but we're gonna become very hated by people who had no idea and wouldn't have had any idea that this was going on.
Right.
Their material suppliers. And they're sitting there going, they had no idea, how were we supposed to know this?
They wouldn't know. They wouldn't know.
And that, I think that's where then the notice requirement becomes kind of implicitly. Um, important to them as well. I mean, if, if, I, I think that would be a situation where we're putting someone on notice that. You know, this is in violation of county ordinance, you can't continue cease operations and. And then if they're on notice at that point in time.
You're on notice that if you don't cease operations and remedy this, remedy the, uh, the violation. That, uh, uh, clay roll water is gonna be on notice that they, they're, they'd be enjoined for. Um, sending, sending water to your operation to complete it or to maintain it after construction.
As much as I like that, but on second thought.
Yeah.
What if this hurts or, like, let's say we're talking about a livestock issue, what if this basically puts the livestock at risk? If this, oh, we did it in the summer and shut the water off.
Oh, well, that's, that's where other, other laws kick in.
Okay.
Uh, because what they're doing then is that with the knowledge that it's gonna get shut off, they maintain, uh. Critters, for instance, on the, on the site, that, uh, then the sheriff needs to get involved to, uh, to prevent animal abuse. I don't like any of it, but.
I'd rather jump to the injunction on the individual.
Sure.
Before we'd have to drag anybody else.
Sure, no, we don't, we don't wanna drag, we, we don't wanna have to drag them yet, but, uh, if there's, uh. You know, and I, I strictly, I think we should be in the resolution we're talking about today, we should be thinking in general. You know, it could be, uh, uh, grain operation, or it could be any sort of, uh, of, uh. Uh, structure that's built in the county without, without a permit or, uh.
So I think if you look at that option number three, then the owner or tenant of any building, structure, premises, any architect. Builder, contractor, agent, or other person who commits, maintains, assists in or participates in such violation. They also be assessed a fine penalty and or subjected to the legal remedies referenced above. I mean, I, do you wanna do the fine penalty there, or do you wanna strike that and just underscore to them, maybe subjected? Even if we don't include it, if we've got legal civil remedies available to us that we can initiate with that from an injunction aspect or, or something. An abatement of nuisance, we can, we can do that, it's authorized by law. So we don't necessarily need to include that in the resolution, um. I would.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, I don't think that we intend to do that, to impose a civil penalty on a third po- party who unknowingly especially. Uh, would be participating in violating our ordinances, but, uh. I think a little, yeah, a little cleanup is maybe in order, but.
Do you guys want?
My other question is. If this were imposed, yes, it would be in our minutes, but would it be appropriate to actually. Publish a statement so that those others would know directly what it's about. I think that's a protection for us, for what you felt. Because I don't know how many people actually read through all the minutes, yes, there are some, but. Not a lot. Um, but having a, you know, this is a serious act that we're not going to hopefully have lots of.
Right.
That a. Little bit in the paper that states. Would protect us and protect anyone who's servicing that. Individual or operation.
And my, my example is probably not as broad as it ought to be, more like clay roll electric would be. One that would be more general, that would be like, say, if he put up a green bin that, without a permit. That, boy, if they can't run the fan, that baby's not worth much.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I wonder if, if there isn't a case to be made here for, um, for keeping it simple. Um, you know, and, and I, I guess I'm thinking, um, you know, in, into the future. Um, that, you know, while some of these remedies sound, um. Practical, I think once we tried to put them into practice, um, you know, the, the, uh. I think Alexis and her staff and Drew and everybody else would, um. Uh, you know, this, th- this would get very, very complicated very quickly. Um, and this idea, I mean, it seems to me that an injunction works a lot better. Than all of these sort of negative reinforcements. Um, it's cleaner, um, it's simpler. Um, it's more direct and gets the problem solved, um, pretty, pretty quickly if the problem is a, is a serious one. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about, um, you, you know, trying to, like, how, how do we figure out who all the. People are who are selling services, I mean, do we go to the feed store? And, and say, no, 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 you can't bring feed to this operation. And then, and then we got the problem of all the cattle and. I, I, you know, it, it, I, I, I think going in for an injunction, um, is just so much simpler. And so much more direct. I mean, if we wanna get the problem solved. And I'm, I'm not sure that cutting off supplies and water and electricity and so on. Um, you know, gets, it doesn't get problem solved, it makes the problem more, more complicated. Um, and so I, you know, it, it kind of makes sense to me that, that we, we go the direct and simpler route. Um, that makes life easier for the staff and so on.
Yeah, I would say, so, I would agree with Betty, simple order is much better. I mean, the only thing I have to. To base it on is property taxes.
Yeah.
When you start the property tax deed, um, process, boy, that, and, and people know about it and they hear about it. It took a couple, and our, our property tax. The linked with property tax list is very small now. People know about it, when they go, oh, the county actually is going to do something. It only takes a couple of these for word to get out. So keep it simple.
Do you guys want us to try to cut back to the language? You have any suggestions? I mean, or do you wanna take a look at that and ponder a little bit more and discuss it next time?
How quickly do we need this in place?
Next Thursday.
Yeah.
Um, I think the simplest thing right now is where do you want, what dollar amount you want to find out?
Say two fifty a day. Should be enough to catch most folks' attention.
We wanna catch all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause, because most people, oh, I'm sorry.
Five hundred myself.
Okay.
Cause most people, once they figure out that they've messed up, try and remedy that situation quickly.
That's true.
So the ones who fight you, we, we need to make it hurry.
Yeah.
I think that's what's really. Reasonable about our ordinance too, is that it's putting, I mean, Drew's gonna put them on notice out the chute to get, get it. Individuals may not appreciate the timeline, but there are some people who just blatantly have disregarded, and I just. I don't know, that, that's concerning to me, is when there's a reasonable period of time and he's working with them on things and they just say, no, I'm not gonna do that.
This has been this enforcement problem. I really don't wanna be heavy handed on this, but we've just had so much stuff. Most of the time everybody's came in and we managed to get it work, but there's been some kind of lit. I wish we could have done more.
Yeah, because right now it's, what are you gonna do to me?
Yeah.
When I, I think of the public hearings that we've had for people who've gone about this right way and sometimes gotten denied. I mean, you know, that's, that's why they have to go, so there's no guarantee that you're gonna get. Your CUP anyway, and so, um.
Or building permit, anything.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This is for everything, not just CUPs.
That's right.
Yeah.
And that's why we should think of it as, as something, it's very general. And I, you know, keeping it simple is really appealing, but, you know, I think Travis has a good point that. It could very well be, we could, uh, assess a fairly big amount of money and never see it.
Well, this would be my suggestion, if we're not ready to make a decision this today and you wanna mull it over. If you could, if you guys could, if anybody has suggestions on things that we could tweak or modify or shorten up. Before next Thursday, if you could. Like email the two of us, Drew and I, and then we'll see, try to cu- compile any suggestions. And come back to the table. I won't, I don't think I'll be at that meeting, but Caitlin will be there on behalf of our office. Um, just because we have circuit court that day on that Thursday, the tenth, but, um, we'll try to get everything all squared away in advance and, um. So.
Question on the number two, it does say maybe. You know, violations may be also assessed to civil penalties, um. There's may in here, is it possible to? Or injunction, you know, Ed, I'm kind of wanting to get this in place as much as possible.
Well, we can do it by Thursday.
Okay, Thursday's okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so we still wanna think about the dollar amount?
I'd say five hundred is okay with me.
Okay, so they're.
Five hundred's good with me.
So that one's taken care of. My only other question then for you or Drew would be how. What can we assess that fine to? How can we collect it? Or what? What else can we withhold without them paying it? You know, like I had mentioned, the building permits that can never, don't pay for.
Yeah, I mean, it, it makes sense to me, um, you know, to have an injunction provision and then, um. Uh, you know, lien the property for payment of fines if necessary.
So if we were to put the five hundred dollar fine in place. And it just hangs out there, I mean, is it, is there any interest compiled on that?
I think so.
This is hey, and I, and I don't have the, that's just, I don't tell with the collections. But, um, but we could like get to that.
You know, I would say after the last. After the last day of the fine, one year from that day, ten percent interest.
I feel like there's a schedule for interest, but I don't know if that just pertains to contracts.
That's what I think too. I think it's, I think it's eighteen percent, isn't it?
I don't know, because I, I think it depends on what the.
That's what businesses can charge.
Well, no, what I'm, uh, there's, there's, there's a statute amount too in state law. And if, there may be more than one, that, that may be the. Yeah, right. And I, you know, realistically, if you're charging them five hundred dollars a day and, uh, take some three weeks to. Get, uh, get their, get their calculator out, uh, another ten percent or eighteen percent at the end of the year isn't gonna be that much.
Yeah, but I mean, and it's not like that fine, that five hundred dollars is going to be imposed on day one.
Yeah, right.
You know, there's a, there's a time where it's like, you need to fix this, and if you don't, the fine's gonna start.
Certainly, certainly, but those that are really recalc, you know, I mean, that, that are saying. Heck with you, I, it's my property, I'll do with it what I like, you know, and there are those that, that fall on that. And those are the ones that we're really need to, uh, make sure that they, they eventually come around, I think. There, so I think that they're gonna probably hang out there at five hundred dollars a day long enough that another. Percentage interest to fine at the end is not gonna make that much difference. There may be. It may be that any outstanding debt date to the state or county may be subject to interest anyway, I.
There is on property tax.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's ten percent.
That's ten percent?
I thought with state tax liens or wasn't. That's what I was thinking of, cause then that gets the science assessed to the.
Okay.
Property for different things.
We could just equal whatever this, the property tax one is, I guess.
And do you wanna wait a year on it, or when you, I mean, with property tax, it begins day one.
Just will start day one. We just will follow the precedent that we have.
So you wanna know if we can tack this onto their property tax?
Or lien the property.
I'll look into that, but lien I think is gonna be a remedy for civil enforcement. I don't know about tacking out of the property tax.
Yeah. No, I think he's thinking of, of tacking on a, uh. A fine, a penalty, an interest penalty on the fine if it's not paid after a certain amount of time.
That was equal to what is proposed on property tax.
Like say if the fine is ten thousand dollars, so we start, we, we start, uh, charging, say, ten percent interest at a certain point. On unpaid balance.
Well, I mean, just say it was five hundred dollars today.
Yeah.
It's really five hundred and fifty, cause it's, if they didn't pay it today.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's over a year though.
That's a year, yeah.
So if they didn't pay it for a year, it'd be five hundred.
Yeah, cause we need to, I don't know what the, I don't know what the compounding period is, is either.
Betty?
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense to me, um, you know, to, uh, tack on interest. Um, because it increases the urgency of, um, remedying the situation, um, right away. So it, it, it really creates some immediacy, um, and, you know, I mean, at some point. Um, uh, you know, the, the, the county should go in and, you know, lien the property at that point, I, you know. Uh, I suppose it, 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 all the, the lien rules kick in. Um, I don't, I don't know how you would assess interest at that point. I suppose it would accrue to the lien of the property. Um. But, 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 but that, this idea of ongoing interest, I think is, is important. Uh, you know, it's, it's really the county saying very loudly, um, you know, we. Uh, you know, this, this, this is important, you need to do this today, not tomorrow, today.
Wouldn't this all be kind of resolved as part of the injunction process? Or don't the fines come up during the injunction?
Yeah, I mean, those are gonna be, those are going to be things that we would request cost for if we end up incurring anything in order to. Facilitate ceasing this.
We need this in writing before we can ask it, right?
Need the.
The resolution language to justify the request in the injunction.
Well, I mean, I think we could file an injunction action against anybody who's not compliant for something.
And then the issue about what it costs and the fees, the interest, is that all handled as part of that?
I'd need to look at what all we can recover from that, or is that part of more of an abate, abatement of nuisance?
I think we need to, I think by next Thursday, somehow, we just, it might not be perfect, get the fine in place.
Yeah.
If we need to tweak it later, after we learn some things, yeah.
We, we should, we should work through the issues that are making you a comfortable counselor, I. In the long term.
Well, thank you.
Or most uncomfortable.
Yeah.
So do you guys have enough to work with on that, or do you have any more questions? Any more, Betty, do you have anything else you wanna add, or?
Yeah, do you need a motion to table?
No, we're not gonna table.
Okay.
Work on it, and we'll put it back on the agenda for next Thursday. Okay, so, uh, feedlot discussion, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Phyllis. Recuse myself on this one.
And we'll now open it up on the feedlot discussion.
Yeah, so. Up, uh, north on Greenfield, uh, we had a guy, the summer, or late the summer, built a feedlot and, uh. In operation, uh, never called, no permits, just built. In operation, uh, never called, no permits, just built it. There's the setback from the road, he's in violation of setback from cemetery. And setback from three, maybe four residences, he's in violation of. I've notified him by letter, we had a sheriff go out and deliver the letter, talked to him on the phone. The individual does not seem receptive to shutting down his operation. He did ask for a CUP application, returned it the next day. With no check or anything and not, and very poorly filled out. Legal description, you said section 35, Lynnwood Township. That's, that's what it's sitting right now, it's a. And we'll probably need the enforcement mechanism to get him properly motivated to get those resolved, so.
I'm wondering if we can go in for an injunction.
I, I definitely think, Betty, that that is something that we'll want to take a look at as an option. I would like to give him, I mean, we're going to approach that pretty quickly, but I'd like to give him until the 30 days or whatever Drew gave him to get complacent. I mean, he's indicated a resistance to that, is my understanding. I, I think he's concerned about the timeline and being able to remedy that. I think that it was an entirely reasonable timeline, considering the blatant disregard for county ordinance. Requirements here, so I think it's very, it was very reasonable, but yes, I think. As we get closer to that timeframe, I would like to have an executive session discussion with you guys about what our options are and what we want to do. Surrounding potential litigation.
Question I had, is there state regs on this that are, are county come first on that?
County comes first, uh, he's probably not in compliance with state regs on this.
Drew's got some digging to do on some.
Yeah, uh, I, I've talked to a couple different people now, and they, the state kind of, well, we'll just kind of let the county handle this. I, actually, the one I really want to talk to is the brand board, I talked to them. And see if I can get them in, and they would not come in and do a count on it. I want to head count on those cows at some point.
Because he's potentially in violation of a few different things. But that's where it's just a matter of gathering our facts, and, and I think that's, that would also pertain to the discussion of. The direction we go from a litigation standpoint.
Right. Yeah, head count would probably precede any state action, I assume. Sounds like we've got some setbacks that may or may not be easily resolved or resolved in any way.
Not unless you get. For the four neighbors, the cemetery association and the three other, three to four other neighbors to sign off. And then you still have a problem, it's, he's probably what, 30, 40 feet off the road and the setback's 150 feet. So even then, he's going to have to push that back, unless the county gives him a waiver for that, but. I don't know how y'all feel about that, but I don't see that as a good option.
So there's other hard. Structures involved that's less than 50 feet from the road, other than fences?
The fences of the, the, the feedlot are, I don't know if they. Aren't the satellite imagery, but.
Yeah.
He's a. He's maybe 30 feet, 40 feet off the road from where the. Cattle gates are at, the sorting chute. He got hay bales stacked up real close to the road, that kind of stuff, so I mean, no. We haven't really set up fences as a structure, but it's, this is more than a fence, this is part of the, the confinement of the animals. So I think that structure is within the 150 foot setback.
Is there any water affected?
No, he's up on top of hill. Far south, but isn't it?
Well, it seems to me like we should put a time limit on where he submits a. A permit application that. Meets the, meets the criteria for an application.
Yeah.
And, uh, and if there are. Variances to that application that are necessary. That he'd have to include all of those two. And. Put kind of a timeline on when that's going to happen.
No matter when he, if he, let's say he comes in tomorrow with a cleaned up application, I still want those cattle out of there until that application's approved. I'd still want the cattle out of there before that, before we take it to. Before we start the whole process, because he's in violation. Get it in compliance before we can consider. Now, I mean, he technically could come in tomorrow, drop even that bad application and a check and hide process. I'd go through the process, but.
But he has to come in, he has to remedy the violation. Immediately or sub immediately. I'd back you on that.
Yeah, I, I, I think we're going to wind up. You know, this is going to be in Alexis's court, and, uh, you know, Alexis, when it, when is the end of? You know, his 30 days notice?
Sometime in mid-November, I know that this 23rd-ish, because this came about. While I was out, and so Drew got that notice taken care of and. So the hope, I, you know, my hope is that what he does is. Sometimes, sometimes these things are met with resistance initially, because it's a shock for people to think of, I can't do this, I can't possibly move. All this property, this is going to cost me so much money, and sometimes when, when the realities of things sink in a little bit for a person, they start making the arrangements they need to. Even if they're frustrated by it, because it's a foregone, and that's my hope, is that he will. Even if it came as, as a frustration initially, when some of those things are, are seen as the writing on the wall there, that. That he'll take care of what he needs to back the train up here, find a different place for these cattle. And begin to go about the process in a proper way. But if he doesn't, yeah, I mean, I would like to visit with you guys then as we get closer to that date, and I don't know what. The meeting is for the commission after the 10th, is it the end of the month?
Yeah, the 29th.
So.
So the deadline's three weeks and a day, and then it's about four weeks till our next meeting.
And I will, you know, if I get done with court early and you guys are still going next Thursday, I'll pop down here and. Visit about whatever we can at that time, if, if there's something to be discussed. Wouldn't it be great if we found out he had remedied?
Well, that, that's my hope, is whoever owns these cattle, once they start hearing about fines.
Right.
Because I, as I understand it, I can't find out who owns them yet. That would be one phone call fixed to this problem, I think.
Yeah.
But once that owner starts hearing that there's signs and troubles coming. Because they're going to want to find somewhere else to put them cattle, because they can't, yeah.
But yes, I think there's further discussion to be had about what, what our office's involvement will be. Compelling that issue.
I don't know where we are in, in cycle, in the cycle right now, whether he's going to have a tough time finding someplace to move them to right away or. Or not.
Yeah.
No fun. Yes. Continue the discussion. Do we need to just continue the discussion or, or? Table, table that, or what do we need to do on this? We don't really have to.
You know, there's no vote.
We don't have to do anything at this point.
I, I've been wanting to get this in front of you guys' attention, so you know it's all going.
Right, right.
Put it on the agenda for next week, too.
Yeah.
And we should have more on the. The previous resolution also at that time.
Sure.
Yeah, we had our first construction meeting or tree construction meeting, so. 18th of October. I think you guys got the notes in your packets from that meeting. So I thought it went real well, we spent a couple hours talking about another hour and a half, going through the building. All the way from the basement up to the roof, looking at loud nooks and crannies, so, you know, they're looking around and. Taking notes, measurements. So, you know, the process was moving forward, I think, quite nicely. I'm not quite sure when the next meeting is, but. I don't know if you want me to kind of breeze through these, or if you read through it and have questions. I highlighted a few things. That. I need to get some clarifications on them from, or may want to clarify to you guys, I'm not sure. One of the things is, I guess, at one point. When a architect corporation was here, there was some talk about some duck work being run through that old jail and stuff. Obviously, I guess we're kind of waiting for the, see what the, how the bond issue turns out there, whether Andy can sacrifice that space or not. If the bond issue doesn't go through, we might have to do some. Reconfiguring there and where they're going to run duck work. So that's a little bit of a snag, but I don't think it's nothing that we won't be able to work through. And they're, you know, they're looking at that now, different options on where they can run this duck work and stuff, if that should fall through.
At least we'll know that by Tuesday.
Right, yeah. One of the other things they said about, an item two, about removing the public safety center boiler. Allowed the, the stack to be removed. I'll talk to them further about that. I don't think we want to incur the expense of actually moving that boiler. You know, the stack, yeah, but the boiler could just sit there, I mean. You know, instead of. Spending extra money to remove it, the one in the safety center, I mean, to me, it's kind of. You know, waste for kind of throwing money away, I mean, to, to pay to assess, make demo that out of there.
Is there, is there asbestos abatement involved with that removal if you did?
I would say not on a boiler of that age.
Okay.
There wouldn't be any on that boiler, no.
And we didn't have any the last time.
Yeah.
Okay, um. So it's kind of on the topic of abatement, that falls on us to have the testing done. So I reached out to GeoTech, they're sending me a proposal this afternoon. And they're recommending that we do the whole site, whole site being the courthouse. I guess that might be good information to have going into the future.
Or really bad information, yeah.
Yeah.
Carrie, we don't have that, I mean, because when we've cleaned up down here, I mean, we, we've known where the asbestos was at.
And the only testing that they did was in that old driver's license room, that's Scott's office now.
Yeah, that was done by, I think I got, I have those notes. From some other corporation, different company, but they'll come in and do random testing throughout the building and. Drawing the samples, the cheap part, I guess, only $10 sample, but he said. They'll be looking at the structure of the building, and if, if, if the structure of the buildings aren't changing significantly. Then they won't have to do as much random testing. I said, well, it was all done in 1912. I, I can't see where there's many additions or any things to those rooms, you know. Oh, there was something done in 1940, I found prints on that, but it's pretty vague, but. I don't think we'll have to draw that many samples, I guess is what I'm getting to. But he recommends the whole site and even some sampling on the exterior outside, which, like I said, I guess, be good data to have going forward. So, like I said, I have a proposal on that, and somewhat of a figure, I guess. What that's going to cost us, and that's one of the things that's outlined here, that's one of our expenses that's not included in here. I guess one of the other things we talked about at length was. I can't remember the terminology on that. Wanted us to. Kind of come up with a list of what. There's two ways they can do that, they put this whole thing out for bid, and if we get to, and to get going into it. And we find out we don't have enough money, they might have to delineate certain things out, and then they got to go back to square one. But the whole process.
Alternates, that's the word you were looking for.
So he said, you might want to propose some alternates, and we, and Carrie and I, we talked, and, and we decided that. Well, let's make that decision when we get a little further into the process, so we, you know, we kind of know. What that dollar amount is. So, you know, we'll keep that in mind going forward is, is to what we want to, to delineate out is alternates. So, I mean. You know. That's about the gist of the whole. Like I said, they're working on it, it's going forward.
Looks like in the pamphlet, it said the 16th or 17th of November.
November, yeah. Those notes here. So, may I have any questions on that? At this point?
Thank you.
Yep, and then two other things. Eliminate that flag pole for each building, which does work. Probably works, the rope goes up and down, illuminate that would be $700. If that's something you guys want to go forward with.
Big sue.
The big sale. I'm in favor of lighting it.
I'm kind of neither here nor there, I must admit, we've spent quite a bit over there. Which we normally have not spent. Something to put off another year, or is it worth it? Yeah, I just. There's. I don't know that we put anything much into that building for how many years, but this past year we put. I'm thinking there are more important things to, to do first. I also. Some of those. Security lights that are available these days at. Much less cost, I don't know.
Well, another thing too, I thought of. As long as we don't combine vandalize it, you could try something solar powered that would attach to the pole and shine up onto the flag. That, you know, I'm sure it's out, I'm sure something's out there somewhere. To get, to get light onto there, so.
That requirement.
What's that? If you leave it up, it's going to.
Yeah.
I thought they dropped that at one point.
As far as I know, they haven't. Yeah, I can ask you, I can look at that option, you know, we can get it. And then going in the future, if we want to do this, get something more permanent.
That'd be for them.
Okay. And then on the commissioner's table. Reached out to, to one of our local contractors, got a price from him, I, I got some information on two more companies of Sioux Falls area. I've heard back from one of them, the contractor here was 8,000, the one I heard from in Sioux Falls. I've heard back from one of them, the contractor here was eight thousand, the one I heard from in Sioux Falls, I'm glad you're all sitting down, was twenty-eight thousand.
He's going the wrong way.
Yeah, definitely, so hoping number three.
I think a little modern blower pledge on these.
A curtain of the front, you know.
Hanging all my hopes on number three, who I have not heard from yet, assures me he is working on it, so that's about all I got, unless you guys got something for me you want to ask or something.
Yeah, still not in the ballpark.
All right, so I'll keep working.
Yeah, thank you. So that handles everything for you, then. I wanted you to hear about the feedlot.
That's it. That's it.
Well, because of
I thought you were gonna tell me it was time for early retirement.
No, 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 I wanted you to know about that, because there are requirements that you'll have to.
I saw it, I just figured it was been passed and I don't think it signed it, I don't think they, there was already a driveway there or two, I'm saying, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll take his gun back.
Yeah, he'll appreciate it. Okay.
I think that's everything.
Meeting.
We moved our meeting date. Move to, move our next meeting date from November eighth to November tenth.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
May it all pass.
Harry, no, roll call.
Evan.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Now we're done.
Moved to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second, roll call.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, we're adjourned, thank you.